All right. Is there any public comment this evening? Anybody wishing to address the committee? All right, seeing none. Let's move on to approval of the minutes from the April 1st, 2019 Finance Committee meeting. Is there a motion? Motion, Ms. Ott, second, Mrs. Ramich. All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. We have a number of items here that are recommended for work session and action. Christine put together for the community education budget, a nice little summary in Board docs. And the same is true, well, for the aquatics budget. Rhonda has also prepared the documents. Are there, those are both relatively small budgets. I don't know if anybody wants to have discussion on those or has any questions, but if not, I would move that we move those two budgets forward.
I have a question.
Sure.
I think I read somewhere, I can't find it right now, but I read that we are going to pay these people as independent contractors. Is this, this will be the first time that we're doing that, right?
No, this will be the remainder of the individuals. We started phasing that in last year.
Okay.
So, I think it's 100% now, individuals that are running programs through community have will be treated as independent contractors. And just a quick reminder on the community education budget. Aquatics is actually part of the community education budget. This is an enterprise fund, similar to our school nutrition services and extended care program. So, the goal is really not to make a lot of money, the goal is really to break even in these programs. And the budgets that are presented tonight, there's, I think there's a very slight profit between all the programs, including the aquatics. I think it's $7,000 expected profit for the year. Sure. I think the next is the budget update. We can do that.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, well, we're getting the screen switched over here. Want to give an update from the last meeting we had. The last meeting was on April 1st, so we have about an additional 30 days' worth of data since the last meeting. We are coming up to the point where we're going to be entering into the second phase of the three-phase process for the budget adoption. Next Thursday, at the action meeting, we're going to be recommending approval of the proposed final budget. So, that's step two of step three. And then, the final budget adoption would occur on June 20th. So, tonight, we do need guidance in a couple areas so we can finalize the budget that's being recommended for next Thursday. Everything you'll see tonight includes an Act One increase of 2.3%. So, that's the same as our discussion that we had back on April 1st. So, everything has the Act One index baked into it. And fortunately, we were able to lower the deficit from last month to this month by about $1 million. Last month, I think we were looking at about an $8 million deficit with the Act One index. This month, we are slightly under $7 million, 6.957 to be exact, with the Act One increase built in. So, I'll talk about some of the changes that were made in the budget since last month. There's a couple major ones that were changed, things that were changed. But first and foremost, all the actual retirements that we've received now through last Monday, April 29th, are now baked in the budget. So, I think a few might be trickling in between now and the final budget adoption, and we'll try to get those reflected the best we can. But everything we've received through April 29th is included. Also, the personnel changes, as the individuals have been hired for full-day kindergarten, actual bodies with actual steps and columns on the salary schedule, their salaries have been reflected in the budget now as well. Also, tonight, and there was some discussion about some additional positions, including two guidance counselors, and some special education positions, they are also now reflected in the budget. The final medical rates, we talked about that in April. We received our second and final look medical rates. They're updated in the budget. We also updated a couple revenue items, in particular, the earned income tax and investment income. We increased that by $450,000. And one really positive piece of news comes on the assessment update, our total tax duplicate for the upcoming year. We actually saw a major increase in our tax duplicate from April to May. It was pretty large, actually. It was about a $17 million increase in assessed value from April to May. So, that's, that's an anomaly to have that large of an increase in one month. And that resulted in about a $400,000 increase in revenue. So, that's also reflected in the budget now as well. There was one particular property that saw an assessment increase, dramatic increase. And you're probably familiar with that property. It was about a $15.7 million increase for a property located on Broad Street, formerly owned by Merck. So, the assessment office did go in and change the assessed value effective 5/1. So, that is now reflected in the budget, too. So, $400,000 increase is a big increase on one property. So, again, all these changes have been reflected in the budget. And that was basically the impetus to allow us to lower the deficit from $8 million to a little bit under $7 million. So, I talked last month about the Act One index for future years. The Independent Fiscal Office now has projections for the upcoming years. 2.3 is the index for the upcoming year. It's 2.3% the year after that, and then it starts ticking up. The projections that we're going to talk about later in this presentation have the Independent Fiscal Office numbers included in future years. This slide shows the history between the Act One index and the North Penn increase. I shared this last month. This has not changed. Only one year in the last 12 years was a North Penn tax increase higher than the Act One index. Previous years, we typically had increases either at or slightly below the Act One index. So, always important to mention that our tax rate, North Penn School District is the fifth lowest in the county, 23% below the county-wide average. So, keeping things in perspective relative to our peers in Montgomery County is always important to note. One of the things we do need direction on tonight deals with our Act One exception applications that we made to the Pennsylvania Department of Education. We applied for and received a special education exception totaling $1.4 million and retirement for $48,000. If both of those exceptions were taken, that would give the Board the ability to raise taxes, not to 2.3% from the Act One index, but up to 3.1%, including the exceptions. That's an additional 8 tenths of 1%, 3.1. So, that's, that's one area we do need direction on because that would have an impact on the proposed final budget. If no exceptions are desired, then what we have tonight is pretty much what we're going to see next Thursday for the proposed final budget. Okay, so, our revenues for 1920 are $267.2 million where we stand right now, and expenses are $274.1 million. That gives us a $6.9 million deficit. Expenses are up 5.35% and revenues are up 3.77%. Our fund balance, once again, in total is $40.9 million. That's an important note, and when we talk about long-term projections, that's really our starting point. 20.7 of that is completely unassigned. Our assessed value that we track every year, this is now reflective of that nice property change I referenced earlier. Our assessed value is going up 0.43% year-over-year. That's still less than the 11-year average of 0.54%, but it's certainly better than where we were last month. Last month, it was about half of that. So, about a $31 million increase in our assessed value year-over-year. Not a bad number. Our tax base history is represented graphically here. We've had increases every year except for one year, back in 1011, where we saw a reduction due to property owner-initiated assessment appeals. So, this budget scenario that I'm showing now is updated to reflect our starting-point deficit of $6.9 million. So, we said, what's kind of a best-case scenario as we end the 1920 fiscal year? So, we have $1.5 million in the budget for budgetary reserve. So, let's just assume there are no emergencies, we don't touch that money at all. And let's assume we have potential positive variances, both on revenue and expenses, that would generate $2.7 million to the good. So, at the end of the year, if everything goes well, we would actually end up the fiscal year with a deficit of $2.7 million. That means we would need to use fund balance to the tune of $2.7 million. Okay, so, that's kind of the best-case scenario, only use $2.7 million of fund balance. And again, that's about $1 million lower than what we were talking about last month because we were able to lower that deficit. Question?
Your potential positive variance, is that optimistic or realistic?
I think it's realistic based on past experience. We've been trying to get that target down to about a half a percent variance. Some years, it's been higher. I think with the way we've refined the budget now, I think a half a percent is probably very realistic. We'll be happy if it's more, but I think a half a percent is realistic. So, again, 2.7 would be the end-of-the-fiscal-year deficit utilizing fund balance. Tax scenarios that we've shared virtually every meeting, just showing what the average homeowner would see in terms of an increase. At the Act One index, the average increase would be $87. If the Board would elect to use the exceptions, it would be $117 increase for the average home set. So, the next steps in our remaining month in the 1920 budget process, number one, to determine and get direction in terms of the Act One exceptions, if there's any appetite to pursue those. Next Thursday, we have the proposed final budget adoption. We need to advertise the final budget adoption, have it available for public inspection. At that, at this point, unless there are material changes, typically, we don't make many changes between the proposed final budget and the final budget unless it's something material. What's material? $50,000 or more, $100,000 or more, somewhere in that range. If we have a couple tweaks along the edges of $10,000 or $15,000 either direction, we probably won't make that change. We try to be as consistent as possible between the proposed final and the final budget. And again, the final budget adoption is in June, and then, we would have the tax collectors prepare the tax bills and send out the bills, and hopefully, they'll be in the hands of everyone by July 1. So, I've updated the multi-year projections. These are six-year projections. It's a 1920 fiscal year, and then, another six years after that. We've updated the starting number, the starting numbers in 1920 fiscal year. Our assumptions are pretty much the same as they were last month. We talked about the debt scenarios for the possibility of future borrowings, including the remaining borrowing of NAP Elementary School and borrowing for the high school, both the ninth-grade center possibly and the renovation of the high school. Those numbers are included in here, and they are the same numbers that we looked at last month. And with the direction that interest rates have taken in the last 30 days, I would say that perhaps the numbers that are in here for the debt are probably high right now. If we could borrow all the money right now, we would probably be able to save money over those projections that were made with PFM. Okay, they did have a buffer in there of about 150 basis points that, quite frankly, again, if all the money was borrowed today, you wouldn't need that buffer at all. But the same debt scenarios are included this month as were last month. So, the blue bars are expenses and the yellow bars are revenue. Every year, the blue bars exceed the yellow bars, meaning that you have a structural deficit that continues year after year, ranging between $4 and $6 million each year. Okay, out to 25, 26. So, what does that do to fund balance? So, under this scenario, again, we're talking about if our budget ended up equalling our actual figures at the end of the year, no variances, no use of, or actually, use of budgetary reserve, $1.5 million. What we budget beginning of the year is where we fare at the end of the year. And we know that's not what happens at the end of the year. We typically have the positive variances. So, consider this a worst-case scenario, worst-case scenario budget-wise over the next couple of years. And unfortunately, in the 25, 26 year, in this worst-case scenario, we go negative with fund balance. So, we have negative equity in the school district. Certainly, that's not something we aspire to achieve. That's a very bad sign, utilizing fund balance between $4 and $6 million every year. Eventually, the fund balance runs out. Starts getting to dangerous levels in the 23, 24 year, and then, you completely run out in the 25, 26 year. In this scenario, again, this assumes an Act One tax increase every year. There's no 0% tax increases here. This is the Act One index every year. But again, this is worst-case scenario, not only from the perspective of budget equals actual, but it's probably, has a higher level of debt in here in terms of interest than what we will probably face unless there's some major change in interest rates over the next year or two. So, I updated the numbers, looking at it from a more realistic perspective. This realistic perspective bakes in those variances every year. Because again, we know we typically have a variance. We typically bring in more money than what was budgeted, and we typically spend less money than what was budgeted. So, those half percent variances are included in this chart. So, we still have structural deficits. The blue bar still exceeds the yellow bar, meaning we're spending more money than what we're bringing in. But the impact on fund balance is less, simply because that gap each year isn't between $4 and $6 million, it's basically half of that, shave off a couple million dollars each year. So, it still means that fund balance would be utilized every year because it's a structural deficit every year. We're spending more money than what we're bringing in every year. But taking advantage, so to speak, of those projected variances, the impact on the fund balance is significantly less. However, in the 25, 26 year, going out six years, the fund balance does get down to about $18 million, which is less than half of where we're at now. So, if we would take this chart out another four or five years, the same thing would happen as did with the first chart. You know, eventually, when you continue to spend more money than you bring in, and you only have savings to rely on, and your tax increase can only be so high, eventually, all your savings runs out. And again, if we took this out 10 years, the same scenario would be true, that we would start dipping into the fund balance to the point where we would be close to running out of fund balance.
Mr. Scrocky did reference some personnel discussion that happened earlier this evening in the Personnel Committee. I did share that with the entire Board now. It is the recommendation of the Personnel Committee to include the Tier One positions in the document I just shared with you titled Staffing Considerations 2019, 2020. That does include, as Mr. Scrocky referenced, two guidance counselors for a transition program at the North Bridge site that had been reviewed in ECP, some teacher assistants for the English Language Development Program where our numbers are up significantly, a speech therapist, and then, three special education teachers. So, I just shared that with you. Be the Tier One positions are the ones that are being recommended. And as Mr. Scrocky indicated, those are in the budget.
So, one of the takeaways we need tonight, again, is we would need direction in terms of Act One exceptions. And we applied for them, doesn't mean they have to be used. We've received them from PD, but we do need direction if we should include those in the budget documentation for next week.
Anybody have any thoughts? Or where does the group want to go with the budget?
I always find it frustrating that the state, in its wisdom, says, okay, every district in Pennsylvania, here's as much money as we think you should, you need. And being said, when I look at all the considerations we have to think about, structural deficit, the burden that we put on the taxpayers in the community, knowing last year, we did take the exceptions for the first time, and put, really, I mean, what could be described as an additional burden on them. I'm torn between seeing the long-term need to want to employ the exceptions, but I don't know that it is the most prudent thing to do two years in a row. I don't think we could possibly consider anything lower than 2.3% at this point. I just think that would be incredibly reckless considering what we're looking at in terms of moving forward. I am curious, not for any other reason other than just perspective, in the past, 10 years prior to this, was there a structural deficit, or was it surpluses every year? Like, what was the, what was, how was the district operating before the past two years?
Well, I'd say in the past 10 years, in general, the district fared well at the end of the fiscal year, and actually was adding money to the fund balance. So, the fund balance has increased over the past 10 years.
And the other thing we've done, as you know, and we will likely recommend that again, is if we under-expend our budget, we will recommend that a transfer be made to the Capital Reserve Fund, because everyone knows we have some significant capital reserve needs. So, we're anticipating doing that again. Mr. Scrocky, the amount of money in this year's budget that we're looking at now, when I say this year's, I mean the 19, 2019, 2020 budget, that's earmarked for capital reserve is the amount of?
We have $500,000 in the 1920 budget to do a transfer. That's part of the budget. So, that would be separate from what we have typically done in the past, where we do an end-of-the-year transfer based on unspent funds. But for 1920, for the first time, we do have money that's in the budget, $500,000. And we will be, in all likelihood, based on our current-year fiscal projections, we will be recommending a capital reserve transfer as we start to close out the 18, 19 fiscal year, as we go through the audit process where we can identify the exact figure. But right now, on the expenditure side, we're looking of coming in under-budget on expenses by about $1.5 million this year. So, a transfer could be made up to that amount. It could be any portion up to 1.5. Just can't be any more than 1.5, otherwise, the district would be overspending its budget.
The only, the other thing I think we have to keep in mind is that in years past, because we have had those favorable variances at the end of the year, we've been able to put money into the capital reserve that we can then pull when we need windows, when we need roofs, things like that. I don't think we're going to have those large transfers anymore. So, the, the capital reserve account is essentially going to be zero, and it will build based on whatever we put into it every year. So, $500,000, it's a good start that we're actually funding it, but it's going to be, we're, we're starting from a way-behind standpoint in terms of what we've been able to do in recent years. So, I mean, we have 18 buildings. It seems like every year, one of them needs a roof. A roof is a million dollars. So, we've been fortunate in the past that we haven't had to budget for those things in the operating budget, and we've been able to pull money out of the capital reserve, but we're not going to, it doesn't sound like we're going to have that luxury moving forward. We might get one more infusion of cash at the end of this year into that fund, but it looks like you're saying you're not confident that it's going to happen next year. Is that?
Well, we have, we always have that we budget $1.5 million in budgetary reserve. And again, budgetary reserve is an unallocated expense, basically reserved for emergencies. So, if we don't need to tap the budgetary reserve for whatever reason, you always have the 1.5 that's still available. Even if you hit budget equals actual on everything else in the budget, you still have the $1.5 million sitting there as a hedge for emergencies. So, that could always be transferred at a minimum if everything else remained the same. But I did mention in Mr. Kennedy presenting his 10-year capital plan, I think for the, the average for the first five years as part of that plan was $3.5 million a year in capital needs. So, the $500,000, you're right, Mr. D'Azio, that's, that's not enough. So, between end-of-year transfers and the $500,000 as a start, we're hoping to build upon that if possible. The multi-year projections that I shared maintain that $500,000 level each year, did not increase it in capital reserve. So, that's going to be a challenge to try to, to increase the capital reserve funding as part of the regular operating budget as opposed to doing the end-of-the-year transfer.
It's, back to the Act One index itself, reflecting Vice President Fusco's comments and thinking a little bit further. You know, we have baked in, at least, there was that tax increase last year which was mentioned. And, you know, when I look at Slide 23, the Act One index, or Slide 8 of 24, the Act One index versus North Penn tax increase, you know, going back to '06, '07, besides anomaly during the recession, the impacts of the recession in '11, '12, you can see that the district essentially raised the taxes every single year to the Act One index. In 1718, the prior budget was the first time that the district did not make such a move. And I would, I would not want to see what our budget deficit would be today had we not had that exception last year. And I think that the bars there on this chart really demonstrate the type of corrective action that was needed in the 1819 budget. With that being said, I do not feel there's a need for an exception past the current Act One index yet. Based on past precedents and the structural deficit which the district has, my choice at this time would be 2.3%.
Steve, can you just refresh my memory from last year when we went through this process? At this time, what was our projected deficit last year?
For the current-year budget?
Yes.
So, our, our budget figure this year is a $2.7 million deficit in the current year that we're in now.
And that's what we saw last year when we had to make this decision, correct?
Correct. Well, it was 2.7 after using the Act One exceptions. The Act One exceptions brought in was about $1.5 million last year.
Well, I think that's some of my concern. I mean, I, I don't want to see us go above the Act One index again. I didn't want to do it last year. My concern is last year, we were in a better situation when we made the decision to go above the Act One index. So, I'm a little concerned that we're saying that, you know, we felt the need to take it last year, but we don't this year when we're seeing a much greater deficit projected this year.
The deficit is higher this year at this stage, yes.
Okay.
And to clarify, that's, you're correct, Ms. Ott, that last year, we saw less, but we also had the projections in realizing what was baked in as a structural deficit to make that type of change. I think there's an appreciation for the burden on the taxpayer that what my comments reflect.
No, I agree, I agree. I think that appreciation was there the whole time. My concern is we're seeing the same projections. I mean, this is an ongoing problem. This is not getting better. So, I'm, that's all I'm saying. I mean, to say that, you know, taking the Act One index last year, but not taking it this year based on that, the exceptions, based on the fact, I mean, we're seeing worse numbers this year than we did last year. So, I'm just, I, I think we need to talk about what does this look like then for the next five years? What are we talking about? I mean, I know some of us won't be here to make that decision, but, you know, are we saying we're done taking the Act One index exceptions? I just, I, I think it's something to consider.
And certainly, my comments just reflect for this year, so.
Yeah, likewise, and again, reflect the concern for the community at large and the fact that, you know, we did take the action last year. And I certainly am not ruling it out at any point moving forward than this year. I just think it's, it's asking an awful lot of our community to have it above the exceptions two years in a row. And, you know, to a point that Mr. D'Azio has made a number of times, I think that, you know, next year, we really do have to take a good look at, you know, where we can find some cost savings. You know, we've certainly put a lot of investment behind priorities, important priorities, priorities I certainly stand behind. But, you know, we only have two ways to do this. We can either raise revenue through taxation, or we can, you know, take a very close look, you know, at our budget and, you know, make decisions that aren't going to be popular with everybody, but, you know, may need to have, whatever those may be, a large scope of options need to be considered.
That's a variable I've thought about before. Certainly, as a Board, we're facing right now some, some big choices in the year ahead. And certainly, we have more opportunity to apply those, those choices to what we're thinking about tonight in the long term as well. Mr. Scrocky, do you recall the number off the top of your head? I'm putting you on the spot, I apologize, of what the estimated cost for high school renovations was baked into these numbers that we're seeing tonight?
Well, we have a total debt profile for NAP, Ninth Grade Center, and high school renovation of $330 million.
$330. And there's a lot of decisions there to be made at the high school level in the year to come as well. So, certainly, there is room to what Mr. Fusco has put forth there.
I think just to add to that, too, is, you know, that we have to, the ways that we can generate revenue are through taxation and through reduction of costs, although I have to say that I think that in all the budgets, budget presentations and conversations that we've had, both in this committee and at other committees, I, I don't think that we see excessive wasteful spending, which is why this is very difficult. And I think if we don't at least publicly state a third option, which is continued advocacy at the state level. So, if we are going to continue to, you know, we're in a state that, that ranks, I think, 46th in terms of state subsidy and state support for public education. So, without that piece and, you know, that, you know, component, we're left with trying to find ways of taking streamlined budgets and pinching even, and cinching them even tighter, or increasing taxes. And so, the burden on the taxpayer is really there unless we also add that advocacy component in. I also think that with that, you know, if making that kind of known to the public that we are going to be really looking at revenue we are going to be really looking at revenue and spending and how we are going to try to tighten it up, that we formalize that through a committee. So, having it at formal meetings at the Finance Committee when we're done with the budget process of really spending time and looking at, at that component, I think that's what we have to do. I think we're kind of in a difficult position where without additional state subsidies, with a tax base that is as strong as what we have, but with the, the expenditures that we need to make, especially with regards to the major projects that we've listed, I think that's, this is the very difficult position that we're in.
The, the numbers, you know, as we all see them, they're not, the projections are not good. And as, Kristen, as you alluded to, it's going to mean in future years, there's going to have to be cuts because there's no way, when you, when you look, even when you look at the projections, factoring in a positive variance every single year, you're still in a budget cycle where your expenses are higher than your revenues. So, at some point, you have to make cuts. And it's, it's hard to say and it's hard to figure out where those cuts are, but it's something that the board is going to have to do in future years. There's, there doesn't appear to be any way out of it unless, you know, there is structural reform of, of how schools are, are funded. So.
I, I agree, Chairman D'Azio. I, I think it's important also for us to reflect on what the board's been able to accomplish in the past year by having a 10-year plan, strategically looking at how we can have the best return on investment for taxpayer dollars, not just in belt tightening, but how do we not get to this point in the future of having multiple significant facilities renovations that need to occur? And that's something that we may not be here to see the benefit of someday, but the hard work we've done in the past year will certainly see those type of results in the budgeting in the future. We're at a crossroads where we're dealing with many years, if not decades, if it can being kicked down the road, we're out of road. And, you know, I think this board's in agreement that we're going to have to find those places, not only hopefully tighten the belt in the future, but make sure that we meet the needs of our students to the best of our ability. And, you know, lastly, I, I think that, you know, Ms. Ramich brought up a really good point that taxpayers in the community need to understand, you know, this state's income tax and sales tax might not go up, but every single year, and we see this, no matter who is in charge of the school board, taxes have to go up locally because that tab is being pushed down from Harrisburg onto the doorsteps of North Penn taxpayers. We're being stuck with the bill. And it's very important to understand that type of structural change which needs to occur, which is obviously much more long-term. But something that we need to do to continue to communicate to all of our stakeholders so that they understand the importance of Harrisburg, you know, not taking a significant amount of our revenue from this part of the state and shipping it to Central and Western PA where they get a better benefit of the, the, the tax revenue for education. So, we need fair and equitable funding of our schools and we need to demand that from our legislature.
And we'll see a snippet of that tonight. Ms. Johnson is going to present information on special education tonight, and we'll see that growing disparity between our special education spending and our special education subsidy from the state.
I will say that is one thing that, um, over the past year that has surprised me the most is how much the state, you know, with their mandates, but they don't want to fund them. And special education is a huge one, so. And when the funding doesn't come for special education, it has to come out of other things. So, I agree with the continued advocacy. That's really something that we must do. Thank you.
Dr. Dietrich, has, has there been any movement on safe schools being an exception? Is that had any movement?
That's a great point. I brought it up again. We had a gathering of legislators and I did suggest to them that, that's something that ought to be considered. I didn't get any promises, but other than, that was something we can think about. So, we can see.
So, I'm, I'm hearing the direction to proceed forward with a 2.3% Act One increase for the proposed final budget. Is that accurate?
Yes.
For me, it is, yeah.
So, I think we need just a formal motion to move this forward then to next Thursday night with what was presented tonight will be in sync with the 2.3% as well.
All right, is there a motion?
Motioned.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, that'll move forward.
Thank you.
Why don't we take the, do you want to do all the, do you want to do the RFP results?
Sure. Let's start with item E, for E, propane tank fueling station bid results. You might recall that we issued a bid for a fueling station, a 10,000 gallon tank located at the high school adjacent to the transportation facility. This would be to fill up our 14 propane school buses that we have on order. So, we do have a bid tabulation that's included in Board Docs. The low, lowest responsible bidder was AmeriGas Propane, and this is for the installation of the tank and also for the purchase of propane for two years. Keep in mind that the $374,000 cost over a two-year period will be offset by $150,000 grant we received through the state, through the AFIG program, Alternative Fuel Incentive Grant Program. We received that grant award, oh, about six months ago. So, that will help offset the total cost. That actually will offset the cost of the tank installation, $230,000. The grant is not available for the actual purchase of the fuel. So, we'd like to move this forward to next Thursday for the official awarding of that bid, the propane tank fueling station bid to AmeriGas Propane.
All right, I'll make the motion. Is there a second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right.
Okay, thank you.
Financial services or, yeah, financial services?
Financial services. So, we issued an RFP for banking services. This was something that was part of our new professional services policy. Banking was on the list to do first. We issued the RFP. We had 10 responses, which is a phenomenal response for an RFP. We interviewed four institutions, not only in a first round, but a second round, interview slash presentation slash opportunity to revise the initial proposal. And our unanimous recommendation of our committee, which was myself, Kristen Johnson, and Donna McGraw, our recommendation is to move forward with the contract with Univest. That would be a change over our current main depository, but we do have a financial relationship with Univest right now. We actually have a large invested balance with Univest because they are one of the institutions that is providing a maximum rate of return to the school district. Their rate was the superior rate compared to the other proposals. They do have several branches located within North Penn School District. They've been a good community partner with our educational foundation over the years, and we're very, very confident that we'll receive an outstanding level of customer service and support. So, our recommendation is to move forward with Univest, a new contract effective July 1 of this year.
So, moved?
Second.
Comments, questions, anybody?
Having worked with them on the Ed Foundation, I do agree they've been a great partner. So, just in that.
I'm glad that we're going with Univest, just from years of working with them and for them. But I just have always felt they were honorable or so than some others.
I've been noted in the notes, but it was a pretty impressive one. The CEO shows up for one of the interviews. That was the only institution where the CEO was available for the interview. And I think that shows the level of commitment, the level of local community involvement, and the desire to earn our business.
And it looks like they're incentivizing our staff to.
Yes.
To do business with them as well, right? That's pretty cool. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. I, I skipped over D. I didn't mean to do that. Why don't we go back to D? And do you want to do the LERTA?
Sure.
I thought that was intentional.
So, we've had the LERTA request. This is for the property located on Allentown Road. We've had previous presentations on this particular parcel. And the parcel we're talking about is one parcel only. That's the strip shopping center at the, at the intersection of Allentown and Forty-Foot Road. And I do have an analysis there, and we do have the property owner in agreement to phase in LERTA over a five-year period. And basically, based on the projections of the developer with the value of the improvements that would be made, the increase, the total increase in taxes, even with the LERTA, over a five-year period would be $439,000 increase for North Penn School District in taxes versus what is being paid right now. $94,000 is being paid right now. The taxpayer would benefit about $292,000. That's in the reduced taxes over the five-year period. After we reach the five-year phase-in, the full amount, 100% of the property would be taxable. The property owners agreed to have a no assessment appeal clause during the term of the LERTA, and he also agreed to the 20%, 40%, 60%, 80%, 100% phase-in over the five years. His expectation is to begin the, the land development process if necessary, get all the required permitting, and have the construction improvements completed in about two years, in 2021. So, the LERTA would not start until the improvements are reflected in a change at the county level with an increased assessed value at the county level. Everything would stay the same until that point. The property owner would continue to pay $94,741 in taxes. He would not be able to appeal the property. And then, the LERTA would take effect again once the county levies a new assessment on the property. If the assessed value of the improvements comes in less, the 20%, 40%, 60%, 80% phase-in still is in play. It's all based on the improvements of the parcel. So, there could be more or less of a benefit to the school district and the taxpayer, just depends on the final assessed value. So, based on previous board feedback and the property owner's willingness to move forward, we'd like to recommend this for your approval for next Thursday. Mr. Summers then would need to prepare a formal document. That probably would not happen, so I'll stand corrected, that probably would not happen by next Thursday, rather in June. He does need to prepare a formal resolution. That's going to take more than a few days. So, we probably have this ready for the June action meeting. But since the property owners in agreement, we felt it was a good time to bring this back in front of the Finance Committee for your consideration.
Anybody have questions or comments? We've had a lot of discussion.
I have a question, just becoming educated on this over the, the last, less than a year. Any decisions that are made by a, a board, say pro LERTA, and this is, I wish Kyle was here to, to tap his mic, but maybe a chairman knows this as well. But it, once a decision is made by a board, my assumption is that that decision only is for that case-by-case basis, has no precedence in future decisions. I want to be assured that, right, there haven't been LERTAs before where prior decisions have been used to maybe overturn the denial of a LERTA?
Each LERTA is considered by each individual entity on its own merits. The only thing I would say in response to that, Mr. Casse, is that if a future developer would come in with a very similar set of circumstances, obviously, if that second one would be denied, that would raise some question. Well, why would mine be denied when I have the exact same set of circumstances? But at the end of the day, it's discretionary by each governmental entity to approve or deny the LERTA.
Thank you.
And that said, the courts always recognize that every property has unique characteristics. No two properties are, are similar, and that's immediately a distinguishing factor characteristic with every case that would come before it.
I'll make a quick comment. I think we worked through this issue together pretty well, and I think that the situation we have in front of us now is a much better situation than what the earlier conversations included. And I'm really happy to, to take some steps here tonight to help bring business back to, particularly the Talmenson community that's been waiting for this to be done for quite a long time, so.
Yeah, sort of echoing that, I was going to say, this is the context of this specific request. For whatever reason, that property has been vacant for a very long time. And our Talmenson Township is solid prudent to want to do something in, in that community to move forward. And I felt that, you know, it was the right and responsible thing to do when you're looking at saying no means a loss of revenue into the district and saying yes, okay, this is in the context of structural deficits, right? I mean, it, it's not going to fix our deficit, but certainly, you know, I'd rather do this than find somewhere else to cut costs, you know? If, if we're generating $90,000 in revenue now and in five years, we're going to get 440, I mean, that's a net gain of $350,000 a year. I mean, that's real money, and that's year over year. That's not a one-time investment. So, I mean, these, to say that we need to look at the budget doesn't always mean everything needs to be, you know, cut. This is a little bit innovative just in that, you know, obviously, some of the criticism was this isn't which, a traditional LERTA, that there was some question as to the definitions. But again, we have that ability to make that determination on our own about our own community. And I just see this as a win for the district and a win for Talmenson and a win for the students as well.
I agree with that, both of you. Anybody else? All right, so, I'll make the motion that we move the request as presented forward. Anybody else want to make any comments or have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, that'll move forward.
Okay, thank you. So, again, that'll appear on the June 20 action meeting. Next item is item G, obsolete technology bid results. This was a bid that was put forth by our Technology Department for obsolete technology items. A list of them is available at the hyperlink in Board Docs. We're recommending moving this forward to next Thursday's action meeting to the highest bidder, in this case, Secure Recycling, in the amount of $39,990. They were the highest bid for the equipment.
All right. And I, I know the answer to this, I believe, but we make sure we do our own internal cleaning of these documents and wiping them before.
Absolutely, yes.
Goes away. Okay. All right, anybody else with comments or questions?
Question.
Why is the, is the spread of, of their bids so far?
That's a good question. I, I don't have an answer to that, unfortunately, but we'll, we'll take it in this case because, you know, we have, we have a nice high bid there. But usually, you see a little more aggregation, a little closer than what we have here.
Yeah, a lot closer. Okay.
No, they were, we followed up with the, with the organization. There's no clerical error, typo, or anything like that.
Okay, thank you.
It may have something to do with how much effort they want to put into taking all the parts out and separating them, and then you can do different things with different.
Configuration.
Metals and materials and things like that. I think if you're willing to put more effort in, you get more out of it, but it could be a function of that. All right. Did we do a motion in a second for that? I don't believe we did.
No.
No? All right, I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Okay.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, budget transfers for April.
So, this is the, the final item, items recommended for the action meeting. We had $2.5 million of transfers in April, higher than typical months. Couple reasons. Number one, budget transfers to ensure the proper account code is being charged. And secondly, one of our budget strategies that we implemented this year that we've done in the past is we had money that was in the 1920 budget, for example, textbook series. Instead of buying it out of 1920, we did have some unspent funds this year. We bought it out of this year's money and then removed that expenditure out of the 1920 budget. So, we had to cover that money through a transfer from budgetary reserve to cover that. So, there's a number of those transfers in here, taking money out of 1920's fiscal year and basically pre-purchasing, pre-purchasing those items in 1819. So, for, asking for this to be moved to next Thursday's action meeting.
I'll move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right.
So, under informational, we have two items. I'll actually start with B and then turn it over to, to Kristen to cover the financial dashboard information. Billy, good luck tonight. Volleyball game, right?
Yes.
We received notification last week that the district received $289,488 in the Act 44 Part B grant proceeds. So, that was excellent news. I'm sure Mr. Dur will talk about this in a little more detail at the Safe Schools meeting. One of the things that's really exciting to me as part of this proposal is to include scanning devices on all of our buses where students can scan on and off of buses. scanning devices in all of our buses, where students can scan on and off of buses. So think about this, if you have a youngster that might get off on, at the wrong bus stop, you know, perhaps the driver, it's early in the year, and the driver might not be familiar with that student. If all the kids are scanning off the bus, at least we can identify where the child got off the bus. If the child is, you know, wandering through a neighborhood and the parents are looking for the child, we can at least target where the child got off the bus. We didn't have that capability before, so scanning on, scanning off. You can also, the possibilities to be able to use this for in-class attendance with scanners that the teacher might have to integrate with our student software system, student information system. So there's a lot of potential with this system. I'm most excited about the transportation piece, because that can prevent, you know, the possibility of a student getting off at a wrong stop, or if the student does, at least identifying where that student might be. So we're still awaiting some additional guidance on this particular grant through PCCD, and we're meeting with the vendor in two weeks, so hopefully, we can start buying some of the items that are part of this grant sometime this summer. So that was exciting news that we received the grant. So last item under informational items.
Mr. Scrawky. I'd just like to commend the administration. I know this was something that was identified even before the grant was available, and to be ready to hit the ground running, knowing what the priority already was, I know this had been brought up months and months ago at Safe Schools. Also, that it's to be noted that, you know, $289,488 is a lot more than what other districts across the state were able to receive. This is very competitive. This ties into some of the issues that we brought up before about the Act 1 index. You know, the state has a lot of mandates, not a lot of money that they want to fund when it comes down to safe schools initiatives. And for North Penn to be able to take advantage of this and protect our students, make a more efficient learning environment, we're just very thankful for the administration's work on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so our last item for tonight, other than addressing any questions on the financial reports, Kristen Johnson is going to cover information about special education. Just to preface with a couple notes, we're calling this financial dashboard information, and this is information that we can do by individual department, and we'd like your guidance tonight. If this is something that looks appealing to you, we can do this for basically every department within the school district. We're starting with special education because I know we've had a lot of conversation in the past about the increased expenses, but the revenue from the state not keeping pace with those expenditures. So this will highlight some of those subjects. All the data coming from the presentation tonight comes through a system we have. It's an analytical benchmarking system called Forecast 5. We've shared some of that information, the benchmarking information from the past. So this is our first snippet at looking at a deep dive into one particular department. Kristen?
Thank you. I'm happy to be here tonight to present to you a first look at Forecast 5 and what we can utilize their information for. As Mr. Scrawky had indicated, this is a data analytics software. Everything that you see in this presentation was generated from a graphic already in Forecast 5 or from a data set we were able to pull down. So the second part of this presentation is to also discuss our historic financial results of the special education program at North Penn School District and how our results stack up with peer groups around us. So the first item I'd like to kind of highlight is, as we had indicated and talked about earlier tonight, special education costs are increasing. And Forecast 5 allows us to kind of get a snapshot of what our expenditures have been for a historic period. In this instance, we gave a five-year snapshot with 19 being the budget for this year. And it gives a breakdown. In this instance, we broke it down by the account type, and we can utilize this software to figure out and to drive our data analytic process and where we want to dive in a little bit more. So for this instance, you know, we know special education's increasing, so maybe we want to look at just our benefit portion. We can click and unclick things throughout some of these graphics. Primarily, if you see a black background, you're probably going to be able to do that, just as an FYI. And then we can drill down. So here, we can drill down, and we can see just the benefits. So this is our healthcare, our Medicare, or our medical, RX, social security benefits, the retirement benefits. And we can see here, we have approximately a $3.7 million increase from 15 to 19. So this kind of drives down into a more detailed level of where, where are our differences coming from year-over-year? And from here, I was able to kind of identify that gap and to drill down a little bit more, and I was able to identify that one of the main driving factors in this instance was the PISers contribution rate. So in this same five-year period, the PISers rate increased 56%. So that's a pretty substantial amount, and that's a large factor of what's driving the increases that we're seeing in special education. But if we wanted to look at just personnel, we can do that as well, and we can see we have approximately a $3 million increase in those five years. So I wanted to see what kind of drove that, and I was able to, in the software, look at how many FTEs are we spending on special education assignments? And you can see in that same, in a five-year period, we increased 18 FTE. So that's another driving factor. So this software really gives us that ability to kind of try and look at data visually and identify where we need to drill down a little bit more. This is just another graphic of representation that we can, we can present to you. Here is the 18 special education costs by functions. So if we were interested to see how much of our 18 expenditures did we spend on gifted education, we can come down here, and we can see we spent 4.13% on gifted education. So it's just another graphic representation. Now, as we're talking about special education, we were able to, to utilize Forecast 5 to see what our special education enrollment is year-over-year. And as you may be aware, there's three categories of special education students, category one being the lowest-cost student and category three being the highest-cost student. So this is just a snapshot of our total enrollment across all three categories. But I wanted to show the capabilities to be able to drill down a little bit more on each category. So throughout this page, you're going to be able to see the categories broken down. This first blue one is category one. This green one is category three. This orange one is category two. And what I did is I compared us to a peer group, or what we call peer group in Forecast 5, and then for this instance, we called this peer group is our MCIU peer group. So it's all of the districts in the MCIU. And in each of these graphs, it's organized with the district on the left being the district that has the highest percentage of their total enrollment in that category. So you can see for category one, and I know it's a little difficult, category one, North Penn is kind of in that middle range when you look at the whole, the whole county. One of the other features on this graph is you can see the, the percentage average for our region, which for us is the MCIU, and across the state. So when we highlight North Penn, you can see this little red dot is where we are, and the orange and, or the blue and the green, yellow are the comparables to the region and the state. So we're slightly higher in category one, but also slightly higher in category three, but not by much. We're, we're kind of right in there in that average, not too far off. But in category two, you can see we are significantly higher. We're farther to the left, which indicates we have a higher percentage than many others in the, many others in our peer group. And in this instance, we have 1% of our total population more in category two, which is substantial when category two students cost more. They cost between $25,499. So that can be a big driver. When we have 1% more students at that higher cost, that can drive our expenditures higher than maybe what others around us are experiencing. And then this graphic is, is just a representation of us with our total special education enrollment compared to everybody in the IU, the MCIU. And again, you can see the red dot, we're slightly higher than the average for the state in the region, but kind of in the middle of the pack. So that's helpful when we go and we look at the cost comparison by districts or by peer group. So here, we were able to look at our total operating expenses compared to what we spend on special education, and again, we use the same peer group of the MCIU. So when we look at the total percentage of operating expenses, North Penn is the fifth highest in the IU, but interestingly, our cost per student is less than the average of the IU. So I think that speaks well to the district's efforts to implement cost containment strategies, and that speaks well, especially when we do have such a higher percentage of category two students. That can drive that cost up per student pretty substantially. But we can also utilize this, this graphic to compare ourselves to others and identify opportunities for improvement. So one area that I, one school that actually caught my eye was Potts Grove. You can see their, their total is about 18,000, almost 19,000, so they're less than us. Their total operating contribution is above the average, but not too far away from us. But when you go back to the enrollment comparison, and you kind of utilize all these different tools to kind of dig in a little bit, you would see that Potts Grove has a higher percentage of category one and category three students. So they have a higher percentage of students in those categories than North Penn, but their cost per student is lower. So this might be an opportunity where we want to, we want to maybe see what they're doing, see what kind of programs they're running that might be opportunities for us to implement here at North Penn. So you can utilize this to, to gauge where we are compared to everybody else in the, in the IU. Forecast 5 gives us the flexibility to utilize multiple peer groups, so we've used the MCIU throughout this presentation thus far. But I also created another peer group, which we call the statewide, and it's districts that have comparable enrollment, budget, and low-income percentages to North Penn School District. So these are the districts that kind of fall in that range across the state, and you can see that we're falling in right on the average for both the percentage of operating expenses and our cost per student. Again, we can utilize this to look at districts that might have a lower per-student cost. We'd have to dig in and look at what their enrollments are and see if maybe there's a contributing reason, maybe they have all category one, and that might be a driving factor.
And as Kristen had mentioned, those were the factors that were used to choose those peers. If we do decide that you're interested in similar kinds of comparisons for other parts of our budget or other divisions within the school district, it would be helpful, I think, if we could define a consistent peer group beyond, for example, we could agree that everybody in Montgomery County would be one peer group, but a second peer group may be exactly those factors, and then we'll be consistent with that and look at those same districts each time we do that deep dive.
Yep, exactly. And I just, just for another visual, we, I created another peer group, which is what I'm calling the Southeastern PA Large Group, Large District. So it's the districts in our southeastern region that have similar enrollment to us. These same five, which includes us, are also included in the, in the group above. So there's a lot of flexibility in how we want to create these groups. We would be happy to take any considerations you might have in kind of making a standard peer group that you'd like to see. Continuing along, I was able to utilize a data, a data set from Forecast 5 to, to drop down into Excel to kind of create some of our own graphics and do our own analysis, but the data was available from Forecast 5. And what this graphic is doing is it's comparing the percentage increase year-over-year in special education costs, which interestingly, this blue line is North Penn School District. The orange, green, and purple are each of the peer group's average. Only once amongst all four of those did the increase meet or come below the Act 1 index, and that one was North Penn School District in 2010. So every year across North Penn and across each of the peer groups, the increases we are seeing are higher than Act 1. And we'll talk a little bit about how that, that's being handled with funding from the state on the next one, on the next graphic. You'll see this large increase in '08. I just want to highlight here that there was a change in accounting reporting. The IDEA funding was included in special education for that year, so if we account for that, the increase is not 16%. It's more like 6.5% for North Penn. Okay? So I took that, and I wanted to see, what's the 10-year change? Again, that's accounting for that large increase, so I also wanted to see what that looked like taking that out for a nine-year average. And when we look at that nine-year average, North Penn's coming in at 50% approximately, which is comparable to what our peer group of the MCIU is coming in at. That is slightly higher than the Southeastern PA and the statewide peer groups, but not far off from those around us. And I did want to highlight one point. In fiscal year '17, across the state, $4.6 billion was spent on special education funding. That's a $1.5 billion increase over nine years. State funding in that same time period only increased 72 million. So they only, the state only supported 4.8% of that increase that we are seeing across the state. And that's driven, on the next slide, in a visual manner, we can see, specifically for North Penn School District, we can see what our expenditures are year-over-year, 2013 being our base year, so this is how much we had received. And then each of those subsequent years, you see kind of a waterfall graphic that shows how much, you know, in a visual manner, how much we've increased year-over-year. That same scaling is used for the state revenue. You can see it is significantly less than where we started in '13, and the increases that we are seeing are not anywhere near the increases that the district is witnessing. This is just another graphic representation to indicate how that is occurring, so the blue being our revenue that we're receiving and the orange being the expenses that we're incurring. And then after the orange bar, you'll see that widening gap between what we're receiving and what the state is providing. So you can see that that gap is getting wider and wider every year, putting more pressure on the local school districts to, to support those costs. And Act 1 increase, as we showed in the prior one, prior graphic, is not supporting those increases that we're witnessing. So, real quick, that was just a brief snapshot. We wanted to give you kind of a, a look at Forecast 5 using special education. So I'm open to any questions, and we would like any recommendations you'd have on areas you'd like us to focus on next.
Tina, I know this is, this one chart that's up there now, I know you've asked about this before. So, for example, in 2010, the delta between what we spent and what we brought in from the state was $20.8 million. I mean, that's a big gap to begin with, but fast forward to 2017, that went from $20.8 million all the way up to $33.7 million in unfunded special education costs. And that's just a phenomenal growth over a seven-year period. And it makes it really challenging when we looked at the chart that Kristen had up that only one year out of the last 10 years were we able to bring in special education expenses under the Act 1 index. So that puts pressure on the other parts of the budget. If special education is exceeding the Act 1 index, that means that we have to come in under somewhere else in the budget, otherwise, the budget imbalance will just grow and grow and grow.
And I would also note that, of course, we know that federal funding, IDEA funding, is an important part of special education funding. There was a commitment made at one time, it seems like a bit ago now, but that 40% of the excess costs for special education would be covered by IDEA funding, and the current number right now is around 15%. So that federal funding is not keeping up in IDEA with the costs of special education. So it's both a state and a federal challenge for us.
If I'm correct, it was never 40%, right? It was always, wasn't the highest like at 20%?
Yeah, I can quickly.
Yeah, they've never fully funded it. The closest they've gotten is that. It is worth noting, I mean, one of our recent updates from PSBA is that there is a conversation, again, bipartisan legislation being considered to actually truly make that commitment, oh gosh, to fully fund, see how mad I get about it, to try to fully fund that 40%. So again, back to Ms. Ramich's earlier comments, not just at the state level, but the federal level too. I mean, there's only so much we can do sitting behind this table if the community isn't helping, you know, push state and federal legislators, legislators to fix these, their structural imbalances.
To that end, there's a PSBA platform that's going to be hammered out in the coming months, and I was happy to represent North Penn last time, and I'll certainly bring these, these ideas next time around.
Kristen, thank you.
Do we buy this program, or are we, is this just a trial for this?
No, we've had it for a couple of years. Yep.
Yeah, the contract was a multi-year contract. I don't recall which year we're in of, did we do a five-year when we did this?
We did a three-year, but we renewed for another year, so we're in our fourth year of this.
Fourth year. We do get a cost reduction because of a statewide arrangement with PASBO, I believe it is.
On the financial reports, I made notes in all the reports. I mentioned earlier that for the fiscal year, we're coming in, are trending ahead of schedule on revenues to the tune of about $2.4 million. We're expecting revenues to come in higher than budget, and on the expense side, we're expecting expenses to come in under budget by about $1.5 million. So again, that will give us the ability to consider a capital reserve transfer as we march towards the end of the fiscal year. So EIT continues to be close to 3% ahead of last year. That's a very good number. I'm a little concerned about the realty transfer tax. That's tapered off now. We got out of the gates like gangbusters this fiscal year, but the sales of properties in North Penn have kinda tapered off over the past couple of months. So we'll come in over budget on that, but not, not by a lot, probably. Investment income is still pretty strong, so we're happy about that. We're hoping the interest rate environment just stays right where it's at. We have a 2.5% offer with Unives, moving forward with them starting in July, once that's approved. So things seem to be in fairly good shape this fiscal year with the remaining couple of months that we have left.
Great. Anybody have anything else?
I'm surprised about the real estate transfer tax because the homes seem to be going really quick and, you know, if you, they just seem to be going into bidding wars. People are paying more than what they're asking for, so.
We need the commercial properties to do that, though.
Yes, right.
Like a $50 million sale gets bid up to $60 million. We need more of those.
Yeah, that sounds good.
I just wanna say how much I enjoy the financial dashboard and that, that component. That was so incredibly helpful to have that information presented in such a visual manner and to be able to compare it. And so I, I think I would really support seeing additional things like that carried through at addition, at future finance committee meetings. I think that was, it was really incredible. I also just want to also acknowledge that this is Teacher Appreciation Week and really just want to thank the teachers and the staff in the district. I think this is a fun week to be able to recognize their service and what they do, but I really think, I thank them for what they do every day.
Anybody with public comment? All right, our next meeting is June 11th.
Well, actually, we had some conversation earlier this evening in Board Leadership about that. That is the night of reflections.
Oh, that's right, okay.
So I know there's interest among administration and board to go to that senior activity, reflections. It's always the night before graduation. Graduation is on Wednesday evening, so reflections is on Tuesday evening, which means our recommendation is to move those finance meeting and the work session to Monday, the 10th of that week.
Okay. So then our next meeting will be Monday, the 10th.
Then a work session to follow.
And a work session to follow. And we'll decide at that meeting, we'll likely cancel the July meeting as we usually do, and we can make a decision on August, because we've accelerated our meetings. They used to be at the end of the month, now they're at the beginning of the month. So we'll make that decision next month. All right, anything else? All right, then we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's hot.
It is.